Getting to order. Due to the increasing concerns surrounding the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will remain closed to the public. There are no scheduled public hearings and there will be no public comment period. Live video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local Channel 9. Recording the meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater YouTube channel. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, the republic for which it stands, on nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty, for justice, for all.
The first item on the agenda is a discussion with town council regarding an intermunicipal agreement with Brockton. David, do you want to discuss that a little bit, please?
So you recall that in the month of November, we let state representative Miss McGraw here place on the agenda the discussion about a potential global IMA with Brockton. And at that point, there was concerns about whether or not we would include new development, existing development, to how we would work through that. And select members, you also had some concerns about what a tie-in meant, and how the system actually worked. So that time I advised the board, right then, to ask town council to come in, because he would be able to answer your questions directly. I think what's important, because he's the one negotiating the decision for Brockton, so that way he knows directly from the board as to what you're thinking. And the second thing is, is that my conversations with David, he can also address your concerns, Meredith, in reference to what a tie-in is and how that would work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So our place before you, a copy of the draft IMA, this is about the fifth or sixth iteration, and it is very similar to the Family Dollar one. In essence, what it does is it just says that Brockton would supply sewer if they were told to. If those residents are going to our businesses or on Brockton sewer, they would pay Brockton directly, because there would be direct build from Brockton. We would have no involvement as the town unless they go behind on their payments, of which the town then would lean them on behalf of Brockton, and then we would receive a premium for our work and our effort. Currently, in the Family Dollar IMA, which is unworkable, Family Dollar is supposed to be built from us, we're supposed to be built from Brockton, we're supposed to receive payment from Family Dollar, we're supposed to eventually Brock. That's administratively cumbersome, especially if you end up doing it for dozens and dozens of properties. So this year would correctly solve that problem.
Does this draft IMA talk about it being limited to existing, just a working document for us?
Definitely a working document, but when this was drafted, there was prior to the meeting that we had at that time. So this envisioned is this provision, section four and section five on page two, oh, four is actually on the bottom of page one, I believe, but section four and section five, one talks about existing infrastructure, and five then talks about new infrastructure. So I think that what I heard from the board from that meeting, is there's concern about doing something to maybe limit large development or some type of development in the future. That is not in this document, because we've done nothing to. We just brought it to you, so when we're with town council, you can advise on what you're looking for, and then he can manipulate it from there.
So, do you want to start off talking about it a little bit, David, or do you want our questions?
Let me, let me try to give my overview. This came to my attention, according to my file, back in, oh gosh, I don't know, three, three years ago, I think. We, we, at that point, we talked about it. There was some issue that had come up with, I think it was Family Dollar, and that brought it to our attention. And the board at that time was interested in pursuing a, an IMA with Brockton that was, sort of what David has used the term global IMA. I was trying to draft a document that was simply a, an agreement that would allow property owners, existing development, and, and at that time, potential development, let's say, to petition through the, through the town, their property, treat, receive the benefit of sewer from Brockton. I, excuse me, I didn't meet with, I tried to meet with, but I ended up talking with the then city solicitor in Brockton. And we, he referred me to one of the assistants. We talked a little bit, we discussed it back and forth, and they were going to go back and see if the city had any interest in doing such a document. It sat there. Nothing happened for a year or so. And then, 2020, in February of 2020, I opened a new file, because we had interest again from, from existing parcels and, and a potential development. We had attorney Wes Morris had a property, and I, David knows more about that one than I do, but I know Wes had a property, I don't know if it was existing or what it was. I think it was existing. And he wanted to know if we could, the city of Brockton, the possibility of sewer. He advised me at the time that was that Brockton sewer system was working at about 50% of capacity, and that they should be interested in doing something, because they've got the ability to, to process sewerage and make money off of it, obviously. And I think they probably, like every other sewer treatment facility nowadays, they get federal money, and federal money looks for regionalization, rather than building five or six plants, the federal government trying to force existing plants to participate in a regional program. Because I know that's happening in Taunton. As you know, as you may know, I represent the city of Taunton now. But anyway, so at that time, in February, spoke with both Wes Morris and attorney Ben Albany, who also had a property that was interested in connecting. I then met with the assistant city solicitor in Brockton, because they had no city solicitor at the time. So I met with Karen Fisher, very nice young lady, she's been there for the assistant, and we talked about the concept. She again said I'd have to go to the mayor, and, and that was a new mayor at the time. So she, yeah, and felt that it would probably have to wait till they had a full-time city solicitor. Back from them for quite some time, Ben Albany's wanted to join in a meeting with Karen Fisher. We ultimately had another meeting. Ben Albany's was there with me, with Karen, to talk about his project, and the city, again, being interested or not interested. She said she would get back to us. Wes Morris was supposed to be at that meeting, but he couldn't make it at the last minute. I drafted up what I thought was a, an agreement that would be a template. In other words, the way, the concept that I envisioned was West Bridgewater, with either an existing property, to modify an existing property, or, in the case of Ben Albany's property, would have been vacant property that would be a new development. They would come, element approvals they have to get through the planning board, zoning board, whatever they needed to do. And then they would come to the selectmen if they wanted to use, using Brockton sewer system, rather than put on site septic systems. To allow this property to participate, the agreement was set up so that exhibit A in the agreement would be the property that was in question. Wes Morris's property, that would be exhibit A. If it was Family Dollar, an existing building, that would be exhibit A. One of the things that I have never had any personal conversation with, but Brockton people have brought to my attention, is the, the mobile home park, David, which one is it?
Both of them are on Brockton sewer.
I'm sorry?
Both, both of them are on Brockton sewer. Both West Bridgewater and mobile home parks are.
Okay, so they must be having issues with, one of them, they were having issues with collecting the money, I guess. I don't know. Something, I know there, there's been an ongoing issue there. So Brockton has brought up things, says Brockton, without an intermunicipal agreement. And Brockton can't collect, they can't lean property in the town of West Bridgewater. It's, they only can lean property in their own town or city. So they were interested in, in talking about that concept. So I tried to draft a document that would, document so Brockton knows what they're getting, we knew what we were getting. David's position all the time was, I don't want to have to pay administrative expenses, I don't want to have to collect bills for Brockton, and I fully understood that. So we tried to put together something so that Bridgewater ever had to do anything, they would get a 15% surcharge, so that whatever was paid to the city, 15% would come, would come to West Bridgewater for their expenses. Now, that's, that's not an agreement with Brockton. The Brocktons never responded to that. But something so that we, the city would pay the town for its, use of its resources to collect bills, if it came to that. And, you know, that doesn't happen very often, but it, but it happens. So you have to comply, you have to set it up to comply with that. So that was the whole purpose of it. Now, has not decided whether they're interested in doing this. We haven't had a plus or yes or no meeting with them yet. They do have this draft sometime, I guess it was considered that, they thought it was for one person only, but it's not. If you read it very carefully, as David pointed out, sections four and five completely indicate that it's set up for either existing or new development. Exhibit A, in reference to the contractor developer or property owner, means that whoever that is, that process this, they come to the town, the town would then go to Brockton. But this agreement would be in place so that there'd be no, you know, we wouldn't have to execute a new agreement with Brockton every time. It's the same agreement, just a new piece of land, or a new, a new connecting. So that's where it's at. If you want to limit it to existing parcels, I would assume that that would include something like the, the mobile home facilities. So I would, I would suspect that Brockton would be interested. I, I think they're interested overall because of the, the regionalization requirements. Before we went any further, I thought it was, David thought it was best that we make sure that, that everybody really still wanted something like this. The boards, it's a, the way I wrote it up, it was not a blanket proposal for anybody. In other words, just because I happen to own property in West Bridgewater, and I want to connect to Brockton sewer, I can't do that without your approval. A case by case basis. And the same thing for Brockton. They may not want to line far enough to get to a certain parcel. You know what I mean? Or have, they probably wouldn't extend it. If it's a new development, most, the developer would have to pay for the extension, but they would build it, then specific expansions. Most cities aren't expanding their own sewer system. Most of them are, whatever expansions happen, are usually done by the developer nowadays. The old days, it used to be what they called a one-third, one-third, one-third. In other words, if the city was going to expand a sewer line, one-third of the cost went to the city taxpayer, one-third of the cost went to the property owners, and, and one-third of the cost came from sewer enterprise funds. But then sewer enterprise funds kind of disappeared over time. They became part of general revenue. So a lot of cities have problems with that now. What I know about it, anyway.
You have any questions, Anthony?
No. So I guess after our conversation from last time, what if we just approve this and add a caveat that new connections come in front of?
I'm sorry, I can't hear Anthony.
Sorry.
I can't either.
Is it all going through mine?
So based on the conversation from last time, I think it would make sense to approve this with the caveat that new connections and significantly changed connections come in front of the court. And then after approval, they fall under this IMA. I don't know what the exact language would be. I think that would be up to David Gay how to word it, but overall, I think that would be the gist.
Yeah, that, that's pretty much right on target with what I was suggesting, is that we want an easy path for any of the existing structures, existing houses, to tie in. But if it's an existing structure with a significant change, let's say, a, in, just, just for sake of argument, to put an example out there, a single residence going to a, a six-family apartment building, that's a significant change. Or it's a brand-new development, we'd want it to come before us for review.
No, I think that's very reasonable, and that, that's what I always had contemplated. Maybe it didn't sound that way, but that's what my thoughts were.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
I'm not sure I completely understand, only because I thought that last time when we spoke, the plan was to have just one agreement, instead of separate agreements. I thought the purpose was to have the one agreement, so that it wouldn't be administratively burdensome.
Well, I think what Meredith is having, one IMA that spells out all the terms and conditions, if you want to tie in. But what we're saying is, within the agreement, we would spell out if it's an existing structure, or they, the, a similarly situated structure, characteristics remain the same, then it can go right through with this IMA in place. If it's a significant change or a new development, this is the guiding IMA, but you also need to get forward approval.
Right.
So what's going to define the difference?
That's what we need to talk about, is...
You could put that, you could put that in a policy statement, or you could, in, in, in part in the, in the IMA itself. But you're right, Meredith, this, what the intent is, is this is a form agreement. In other words, this is the standard agreement. But once you fill in the blanks, if it includes a new development or an expansion of an existing development, then it needs approval. But the, the way to get board approval is going to be a little more detailed, obviously. If it's a new development, you'd have to approve the development. They can't just decide what they want to do.
Now, how is the city handling other IMAs? Because my understanding is, East Bridgewater has something similar going on.
With, with whom? With Brockton?
East Bridgewater and Brockton.
I, I don't, I know that they, I know the city is, well, I know, I understand that the city is in conference with other towns around it, because they have to, because of their, that's what they're encouraged by the federal government to do. I have not seen what format they've used in East Bridgewater. I was hopeful that if they didn't like this one, they would give us what other towns. This is similar to what we've done in Taunton with Berkeley, Norton, and, and, and for limited sewer, because Taunton Sewer Department, we have Dayton and Rainham in Taunton. But that, Rainham and Taunton, we've pretty much at capacity for Taunton. So we don't have the luxury to expand it as much as right now. We're going to be building a new plant sometime in the next few years, at an extremely high cost, but they, we have to anyway. But...
So this was drafted, it sounds like, a while ago, and it doesn't sound as though Brockton has responded, I mean, neither affirmative or negative about it. Has there been any confirmation that they're considering this IMA?
First, what happened, Meredith, was, as I said, they didn't have a, well, they had a city solicitor when the mayor was first took off office. That didn't last long. They hired another city solicitor who also didn't last long. And now, they've recently hired Meghan Bridges, and I think she's been there for a number of months. And I'm doing that job in Taunton. I mean, it's, there's a lot of things going on, so it isn't totally, with COVID, it isn't totally unusual. I'm, I, I think they're interested, but you're right, they have not responded one way or the other. So, I mean, but we haven't been aggressive in, in trying to get them to respond either. Where we're at. I mean, I'd be more than willing to contact their, their law department next week and say, look, the, the selectmen are interested in trying to pursue this, this type of an agreement. You have my draft, where are we? What, what, what do you need to change? Do you want to use a different format? If you want to do something completely different, send it to me. I mean, this, this isn't cast in stone. This is just something that I've used in other places, but it's not, examples, it follows a lot with what Family Dollar is, but it's not, it's not something that we can't modify, if that's what they want to do. As long as, you know, the modifications are acceptable to you people.
Well, I guess we gotta have to, we're gonna have to get some sort of affirmative or negative, if they're even willing to have the conversation, because it sounds like we're to a project that they're not even responding to yet. I mean, and, and I understand how this has happened, but if they're not interested, I'm not sure we should spend any more money on this project.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with that, but, but it does have some, just property owners in, in West Bridgewater, that are, you know, in their vicinity where they could take advantage of sewer. So, and, and, and I know that, David, if I'm right, wasn't Family Dollar's issue that having, it was having issues?
No, there was no issues.
No, they were, they just, they just wanted a change?
Yeah, Family Dollar was on the existing septic system. And so was McDonald's, which obviously is more, when they just changed ownership, they went to closing, Brockton, they wouldn't issue them whatever permit they needed for sewer, so Family Dollar couldn't close.
Oh, okay, okay. I think there was something wrong with Family Dollar.
Yeah. So it would want to avoid something like that from happening again. And like you said, assist any of the residents that are in an area where they could tie in. But if this is what was presented to Brockton, we have our own modification. This isn't really what we want to go with right now. So this would be an opportunity to not only start talking to Brockton again, but also let them know, by the way, here's where we currently are now. It's changed from when we first came to you with the suggested draft.
Although I will say this, my guess is, and again, I'm guessing, but my guess is, is that Brockton couldn't care less whether or not it's going to be just existing or new, or some version of that, right? The bottom, like Meredith was saying earlier, I think just interested in having an IMA. Like, are they going to sign IMA? So maybe what, what we would ask David to do is, look, just give us an answer. Do you want an IMA or not? If you want an IMA, then let's tweak it that is acceptable to the board and present it to Brockton. They may have an issue with some of the administrative aspect, they may have an issue with the 15% premium, they might have an issue with some of that. But my guess is, they're not going to have an issue as to who you approve and who you don't approve. Like, that's my guess. David, if you think differently, let me know.
I think you're right. You're right. You're right.
So I think really, right now, is the board still, because when I started this project a couple of years ago, it was a different board, different makeup. At that point, we're interested in looking for an IMA, and like David said, through the years, different things occurred. So in doing an IMA, then David presents it to the city and says, hey, can you provide us an answer? Yes. Now that we're looking at the details, we'll stop providing work on the details. Is that fair?
That sounds fair.
That makes a lot of sense. Let's find out if they're interested.
Okay. Sounds like a plan to me.
Okay.
I will, I will do that.
Okay. So since, since we're having here, one of Meredith's concerns was with regard to tie-in.
Yeah, I did have questions on how, I mean, when you say tie-in, does that mean just one pipe? What, what does tie-in actually entail? And does that need to be defined, especially as far as existing property? What if the real estate is left to a trust, and there's two brothers, and they want to split it? I mean, we are really going to have to get into details if we're going to specify we want it to stay this way.
Well, tie-in is, is for one property, pipe for the property. In other words, if you put a sewer line down West Center Street for two miles, you provide what they call stubs to every parcel that has a property on it. And generally, you provide stubs to those parcels that are vacant, based on what zoning would allow that parcel to have by right. So if you had a vacant piece of land that was three acres with 300 feet of frontage, and you had a lot requirement of 100 feet of frontage, you could theoretically have three lots. So that's what that would, if, this is when city is putting in a sewer line. They charge what's called a bedament. And they based a bedament on how many lots they are going to be able to put in the street. Sewer goes down, I'm just picking a street, West Street, and go by existing homes, 15 existing homes, the cost of the sewer is a, is $100,000, you divide it by 15, and that's the bedament. 15 homes plus a large piece of land that could be developed into X lots, then it goes to, the cost is divided by 15, plus the number of lots that could be allowed by, by frontage there. And that's how they decide how much everybody gets charged a bedament. In, in most cases nowadays, so Meredith, have the money to expand sewer systems, developers are expanding the systems, they put in the sewer, they are required, if they do it in a public way, to provide stubs to any parcel that exists along the, along the road. Whether the property owner ties in or not, is generally, they don't have to pay a bedament, because it's not being done with public money. So really, that issue doesn't, maybe, the, the, the number of connections is going to be, depending upon what, what, what the sewer line is. Is it going to be for a new development of 15 house lots? Then it's going to be 15 connections. If it's going to be one house lot, and a sewer line's just extending, or it's already in the area, then it's a, a one-line connection. If the developer or the property owner's doing the, the extension, and there's a tie-in fee, usually a tie-in fee goes to the sewer treatment plant, would go to Brockton, not to, not to West Bridgewater.
Now, how would that work with an IMA? Well...
The same way, except that West Bridgewater, what, the role of the town would be simply to provide Brockton security, so that if the property owner doesn't pay, the town will help collect the bill by, by leaning the property. And as a result, the town would get a certain amount of money for its expenses. I mean, somewhat aggressive in putting a, a surcharge in, did anything or not, just because, you know, it would be nice to have some money come in as a result of the project, and it's not costing us anything. And if the developer or the property owner wants to tie in, they know what they have to pay. So it's $100 plus 15%, or whatever it is. So it's $115 if that's 15%. But I think...
Okay.
Okay. So, I mean, I think really, the, the solution we just presented is to say, let's find out whether Brockton's interested. If they're interested in, and then we can decide whether we're interested.
Right.
Whether or not, that's it.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, have a good night.
You too.
With you tonight, so I'm going to relax, I hope. I'm gonna try anyway.
Thank you, David.
All right. Have a good one.
You too. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to voting on the filming policy.
I'll second it.
I'll do some favor.
Anderson, aye.
Raise yes. You need a miss vote? Vote on vacation carryover requests. We have three. Principal assessor John Donahue, treasurer collector Scott Goldar, assistant treasurer Maureen Adams.
Yep, so there's three of them, they all fit in a little bit of a different bucket, but in the end, we're asking to do the same thing. John Donahue falls under the personnel bylaw, looking to carry over five days. As a result, because he is not under contract, some non-contractual employees fall under the personal bylaw when it comes to vacation time, subject to approval of the board of selectmen. Scott Goldar is a contractual employee. However, as I've started to change the conflict with the approval of the board, is that we're having all of our requirements tied to the bylaw, and as a result, Scott's under contract. And as a result, Scott's under contract, but it is subject to the board. And the last is Maureen Adams is a union employee, and she is subject to a personnel, as to a collective bargaining agreement that's signed by the board. So therefore, all three of them are looking for board approval to carry over their respective vacation time.
Any questions, concern?
I'm trying to flip to those pages fast enough. I saw that it said anniversary date, start date of new benefits year. I, I only saw because John Donahue's was up. It said July first, twenty twenty. Does that mean he's carrying them over since that past July, or is he carrying them over as of December?
So he would be carrying it over from July first because he had a contract that expired in June. So all of his vacation time had to be used by the end of June. And since he didn't use it, he is looking to carry over five days from July first on. So he hasn't used them, but he's looking to carry them into the new year.
Is there a policy as far as the time limit on making this request? It seems a little delayed, six months late.
So the reason it's delayed is because he has been actively trying to negotiate a new contract with the Board of Assessors for six months, and they have not entered into another contract. And him, my guess is he just said, you know, I'm also just carry over my vacation time. To answer your question directly, because it falls to the personnel bylaw, the personnel bylaw does not stipulate the amount of time that the request has to be made. I would assume it would be fair to say it has to be done within that year, but it doesn't say within that year when it has to be done.
Okay, no, I just saw the date and wanted to ask the question. If he's entitled to the five days, I'm okay with it.
So did you make a motion to approve, or was there, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Can I, yes?
What's my name? Anderson? Yes.
unanimous. Communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. I don't believe we have anything correct. Correspondence from the public to determine a course of action. I don't believe we have anything there. We have no public comment period. Town administrators report.
Yes, we don't find me from Madam Chairwoman, one A, except meeting minutes of December two and December sixteen.
Oh, I did.
Meeting minutes on December second and December.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
I will call. Oh, Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So when to my report, we have our COVID nineteen update. This past week, we update our numbers every Tuesday. This past Tuesday, we had fifty-nine cases over a one-week period of time, but previous week was forty-nine. So, you know, we've had a hundred and eight cases in two weeks. Again, more than we've ever experienced in the past. You may remember at our last meeting, right before Christmas, we had forty-three cases. So, you know, we're starting to get forty to fifty cases per week. It's indicative of what's going on in the state and the rest of the country. But, you know, our Board of Health continues to do the contact tracing, and we continue to monitor the situation the best that we can. We all knew that as winter months ensued, especially with holidays and people getting together, and we're cold in the month, people are gonna be inside, some of this would happen. I do have a couple of good pieces of news, though, is that one is, is that under the most recent legislation at the federal level, the CARES Act funding was extended. So you may remember a couple of months ago, I was here and I said I had to make the decision and roll the dice. We had one point two million dollars to spend. And other municipalities spent it all because that'd be spent by the end of December. And I said at the time, we know COVID doesn't disappear in December. We're still gonna have expenses. I'm rolling the dice. I'm hoping that we're gonna keep a couple of hundred thousand dollars left over. Because I had to assume that one day, common sense in DC would prevail to extend, they didn't have to spend any more money. All they did was extend the date. They did that. So now, West Bridgewater is in envious position that we have a couple of hundred thousand dollars that we know we're going to need for COVID-related expenses to be able to spend over the course of the next year. And a lot of municipalities out there, now they're gonna be in trouble because they spent every dollar. And they spend dollars sometimes on procuring things that were nice to have, and now they're gonna have real expenses that they're not gonna be able to cover. So, you know, you know, every once in a while, we guess right. So, so that's a good position. And I will say that the Biden administration has made it very clear that they're going, they have an additional stimulus package. Both senators this, today were announced that they will be Democrat, so therefore he will have a majority in both the House and the Senate to work with. So the assumption is that if there is another stimulus, we may receive more money coming forward as well. But in the short term, getting into is, positive answer is, it's been extended. We have a couple of hundred thousand dollars to spend. And we'll put it because we have over the past. The other good news is, is that vaccines have started to roll out. So have a public safety personnel, we've already done all the forms and all the entry point, all the entrance forms that we had to do, and they will start to get vaccinated next week. There's a three-phase out rollout with the state. Phase one is, is to get all public safety first responders and medical professionals vaccinated during the month of January. In the month of February, we'll roll to phase two. In reference to municipalities, the key is, is that schoolteachers and staff will be vaccinated. DPW workers and other people who have face-to-face contact will be vaccinated. We have made a request. I was on a call with the Lieutenant Governor yesterday. We have placed another request to the MMA to allow our inspectors, because they're face-to-face, our building inspectors, our health inspectors. They're going out face-to-face meeting with people. We're gonna ask them to be grouped in a DPW. The Lieutenant Governor seemed to make, she seemed, she, that makes a lot of sense. So we expect them to implement that. And then phase three would be the general public. Oh, phase two, at least at this point, it would be people over sixty-five years old, or people that have two or more mobility, morbidity issues, meaning that they have two or more underlying conditions. So there is some good news on that. The vaccines are being rolled out. Obviously, there's still going to be some logistical situations. Some vaccines like Pfizer that requires extremely low temperatures, the state's gotta be handling those. Moderna's vaccine doesn't require anything more than a traditional freezer system. And so there is discussion that it's some local areas that will be able to handle it. And they'll also be referring to some third-party distribution sites. We'll see how that all goes out. Any questions at all about that? But again, I think that's all good news. The next was the Brockton City Committee Request Response. Quite frankly, this is a little bit old news, but I just wanted the board to be aware. Is that back in November, when there was discussion about the IMA, Brockton was under the impression, you remember from that meeting, that we were looking to sign IMA specific to one development. And so they were requesting my presence and town council's presence to be there and to be able to speak to it. When I explained in my memo, which I provide for you so you have to them that this is not for one person, this is a global IMA no longer decided to me, because it was no longer that important to them. So now we'll see as to whether or not they want to have a full IMA. But that was not really geared towards the IMA, it was more geared towards this development. And so because that development, I spoke into the developer, I've informed him that based on that meeting in November, that if West Bridgewater is going to sign IMA, it is not going to have interest, most likely, to sign IMA that's going to allow, allow large-scale development to tie in. He understood, and what he communicated to me is he would continue his development, but he would just do an onsite septic system, which he has the right to do. So he'll do whatever he has to do in reference to that. So again, I just put this so you had it, but it's kind of old news. And the last is, again, I think some good piece of news. Last fall, we had applied for a grant. We've done more with grants this year than in any other year, because as the state has had reduction fee in, in state aid, somehow they've still been able to have a grant now. So we've been pretty aggressive with that. So unfortunately, we did not receive this grant, but we had applied, if you recall, for building a sidewalk from War Memorial Park up to the center of town. In which we were gonna add some little greenery over near the center of town, add some more picnic tables. We placed a picture there. I think it looks fabulous. We didn't get the grant. However, they just reopened another grant, and the only people that can apply for are the people who didn't get it last time. So, so that part is good. So we have now, it was, the, the grant was due yesterday. So I signed off on it yesterday. We sent it in. The intent is to have the grant awarded, administered, and finalized during calendar year twenty twenty-one. So hopefully, we receive good news. I don't know, sixty days, ninety days. Hopefully, we receive it. And then, because we already have our sidewalk contract with Searstich, which is our procurement, we don't even have to go out to bid. You can really just get somebody in there and get going. That's all great news. So we just have to get away with the bit. So again, just an FYI to the board, they were making another attempt.
Any questions about any of those topics? No?
No.
Thank you. If we don't have anything else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Hey, all those in favor?
Can I, yes?
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.